Thirty-two, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so I would, I need a motion to amend tonight's agenda. And a motion to approve the agenda.
I would move that we amend the agenda per se, one. Adding social media and having an employee in exactly the same position.
I'll second.
Hearing a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Then I would be then approval of the agenda for tonight.
I'll move to approve the agenda with the amendment that we've already approved.
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We're going to go into announcements. I do want to remind everyone that these board meetings are our business board meetings, and they are held in public, they are not public board meetings. This board is governed by Idaho Code Title 33, Chapter 5, follows our district policies and IDAPA rules that are in effect. The time for public input is provided for the public to express themselves to the board. It is not a time to engage with the board, nor it is a time for question and answers. The board in its discretion may ask clarifying questions to ensure it understands the input provided. However, no discussion or conversation takes place. I'd like to move into employee spotlight. And so the public's aware, I've injured my foot, so I won't be standing. Mrs. Arnold, the Board of Trustees is honored to welcome you as the Lakeland Joint School District Superintendent. You have committed thirty-one years of dedication to the educational profession, which is commendable, and the fact that your thirty-one years, your thirty-one year commitment has been in this district is extraordinary. Your foundation of leadership began with Bob Jones, and now you are able to lead this district as our superintendent with the knowledge you've gained by those that have gone before you. Throughout your career, you have listened to the parents, your peers and colleagues, and most importantly, the students this district serves. You made safety a number one priority. You are the founder of our armed guard program and implemented an environment of safety within each building in our district. Your passion for literacy with children and adults is immeasurable, and your love for education is a breath of fresh air for our district. I know you will lead the Lakeland Joint School District with integrity, genuineness, and a thorough understanding of the communities our district represents. As a small token of our appreciation for your dedicated and committed years of service to the Lakeland Joint School District, we give you this plaque.
Good timing.
Thank you. We give you this plaque as a reminder that you are valued and your dedication has been noticed. Welcome aboard, Superintendent. Congratulations.
Thank you. These were my mother's favorite, so thank you. I just can't tell you how honored I am to be in this position and to get to work with people who care so deeply about our district. And together, we are going to do great things.
Yes.
So, thank you. And these are beautiful, but I can't see you. Are you okay if I move over right now? Thank you.
You are welcome. Next, we have Corsca Development. Corsa, not Corsica, I apologize. Corsa Development. They have closed on the Grace Meadows development and would like to present a check to our district for sixteen thousand five hundred dollars.
So we have Anna and Mike here tonight.
Okay. Will you arrest as?
My name is the CEO and Senior Development Manager for Corsa Development. We're super proud that we're able to make this contribution to the district. I went to John Brown Elementary, grew up, raised here, finished at Lakeland Senior, so local, and it's super humbling and I'm really proud and honored to be a part of an organization that's able to give back to this community. So we're really excited to be hopefully the first of many donations that we're able to make to this community and to help support its children here.
We would love that.
Yeah, thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yeah, so we would.
Yeah, we do, this is our first project in the Rathdrum community. We do have other projects going on, but we realize that with the rapid growth, a lot of times the systems, impact fees and stuff are not set in place. So we just wanted to make this donation on a token of our appreciation.
We thank you. It is a tremendous, it means a lot to us. It really does. And I pray you're leading the way for others to follow.
Yep, hopefully.
We definitely need the help.
We brought a big check, we were hoping to do a picture with you guys. And Corlin Press is here too.
Sure.
And I think we got an okay from Brian to do that.
Okay.
So if you guys wouldn't mind, and then Mike has the real check. This one is not our real brown number or anything.
You mean it's not one, two, three?
No, I know.
Right?
One, fast, forty-three is my lucky number, so it's on the check. Yeah, so I don't know if we can get everybody to kind of stand back here.
Right here.
Yeah. Yeah, let's do that.
Hi, Natalie. Thank you so much.
It's nice to see you.
Nice to see you too.
Yeah.
All right.
Does somebody want to hold the other side of the sign?
Cut hard. Do you want to stand behind you?
Please. One, two, three, one, two, three.
Beautiful.
Thank you. Thank you, Rebecca. One, two, three, cheese. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Who's calling stuff in, Charlie? Thank you.
Mike, could you send a copy of that picture to the, to the district?
We'll put that on our Instagram.
Yes.
We just have Brian's email address you want us to come to.
You can send it tomorrow.
Thank you. Thank you, Rebecca. That way we can post it on Instagram and Facebook. Okay, we'll move into public input. The first person is Bonnie Rousher.
That's right.
Hi. Good evening, Superintendent Arnold, Board Chair Thompson, and members of the board. My name is Bonnie Rousher, as Board Chair Thompson mentioned. I'm a mom of two elementary age kids in the district. I'm a member of the school's PTA, and I've recently joined the curriculum review team for the district. And I take the responsibility of being involved as a parent very seriously and being a part of the community very seriously. And so I just wanted to say that I appreciate the opportunity that this district provides for parents like me to be involved, both at the school level but at the district level. I'm here this evening to reinforce and reiterate on an email that I sent late last night. Hopefully you've had a chance to read it, but if not, I will kind of summarize basically. My concern is over the sources of strength curriculum. I know it's being used in some capacity in the school, so I'm not fully aware of how deeply and at what grade levels and all of that. So I have some questions around that. But I'm hoping to get a better understanding of how the curriculum came to be implemented in the school, what the review process was or was not before it was implemented, and what the goal really of that curriculum is for students in this district. As you may have read in my email, I reviewed a request for some supplemental material of that curriculum through the curriculum review team and was disheartened to see that it really is full of social, emotional learning tenants which are promoted by what is known as Castle Framework. And this framework, for those of you who aren't familiar, intends to systemically deliver CRT and SEL tenants into schools and into communities. It also delivers equitable policies and practices in schools and create, to create more inclusive learning environments and to reach into families and communities. And though that may sound nice, this is the framework through which critical race theory is introduced to students at the youngest ages of learning, as well as a push for gender ideologies. I will also say that if you go to the website of the sources of strength leadership page, you will see almost, I think every single person listed on the leadership page has their pronouns listed as well. So it's just kind of a part and parcel of who has developed this curriculum and what their, what I believe their agenda to be. Another concern I have with the curriculum is emphasis on peer watchdogging for middle and high school age students. So peer leaders are chosen, I'm not sure by whom, and they're trained, and I'm not sure in what fashion. And then they're encouraged to norm and lead the charge in cultural change in their schools. These leaders then report back to their teacher leaders for support. So my questions about that are what culture change are they meant to institute? What ideas or ideologies are they being asked to norm? And what social pressures are they asked to put on students who may not share in these norms? And you can look at the website, if you go to the peer leaders menu at the top and hover over it, there's a dropdown that talks about normative or norming certain behaviors and cultural ideologies. I would like you to hear me and hear my heart to say that I believe that students who struggle with suicide and crisis need resourcing. I have absolutely no issue with that. I don't, it doesn't matter what their struggle is, what their background is. I don't care about any of those things, they're not, those shouldn't be divisive issues. If students are struggling and their suicide issues or crisis issues, they should be resourced and teachers should be resourced. More importantly, I think the appropriate, you know, what's the word I'm thinking of? The, not the teachers, but the, they're, not therapists.
Counselors.
Thank you. The counselors in the school should be resourced to handle those crises. So I'm not advocating that we get rid of it. But what I am asking for is just an extensive review of the curriculum. If it's the case that the board has already done that, and I wasn't able to do like a keyword search through the meeting minutes for all of history, so I couldn't see if that was already done. But if that is the, if that is the case, I would love to access those notes or those meeting minutes so I can just have an understanding of how that process came to be. And then I would also like to suggest that the board and the curriculum review team will get other options to fight devastating and heartbreaking issues such as suicide or critical crisis that students may face. I believe that there must be options that exist that don't include these types of divisive and highly political issues and that actually give hope and give strength to students who are truly struggling. And I know that there are community members like myself who are willing to help, so. Thanks for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you for speaking. Next up is Anita.
Dupcic.
Dupcic, thank you.
It's a tough one.
Well, I wasn't quite sure how to run the last three letters together.
Yes, it's a good travel word. Anita Dupcic Rathdrum, good evening Superintendent Arnold, Chairman Thompson, and Board members. First of all, I'd like to thank the board for approving Resolution 2021-10-07, which states that the Lakeland School District does not support CRT or its associated tenants. I am currently reviewing the Second Step Skills for Social and Academic Success K2 Grade Material. My concern about this program being used in our district is that while it sounds nice and nurturing to focus on emotions to help students focus and learn, the way this material is presented sets the stage for incremental changes in the way our kids think about teachers and parents and sometimes history as they progress through the full pre-K through seven program. I kind of looked at some of it online. And after looking at the website for Committee for Children, which is the developer of the Second Step Program, I don't see that they have the same values as most of our community. Many, if not all, of their additional resources to Second Step users direct them to anti-racism and racial bias, social emotional learning, as well as alternative lifestyles. And regardless of what you think about anybody's lifestyles, that is between a parent and a child. Schools were designed to be in the business of educating academically, not socially. Socialization begins at home with family, neighbors, church, sports. And that's, and it's a byproduct of all of these interactions. And because our district has specifically stated that it does not support CRT or its tenants, I believe the Second Step Program, which is a stepping stone to CRT according to the developer's website, should be removed from Lakeland's curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to report agenda. Into the staff reports, we have the financial report that we received from CFO Wallace. Does anyone have any questions, comments, or concerns?
I do not.
It does seem like we're just cruising along with everything as of us. Moving into old business. We have the approval of the Heritage Health MOUs, that is an action item. The biggest thing on this for me is the year, a period of coverage is not a year. And I brought that up the last time, and it's still not been corrected. So I don't know who's drafting the MOU. But that's not accurate. Does anyone have any discussion that they'd like to have on the Heritage Health MOU? I do appreciate the corrections that were made from previous. We are no longer in the, working with them with medication, so that's a plus. Well, it is set for action, so if anyone would like to bring a motion regarding the MOU.
I move that we approve the MOU with Heritage.
Okay, I would like to discuss the fact that the year on it is inaccurate. The period of coverage is from August 1, 2022 to August 31, 2023, but it specifically states in the MOU that it's only for one year. That's not one year time bracket. So. Does anyone have any thought or input on that?
Is that, was it not changed because they're not willing to change it? Or was it just oversight on?
I don't know.
Okay, then.
It was an oversight.
So if we could get that changed, I would be, I would move to approve it with that correction being from August 1, 2022 to July 31, 2023.
So you want to amend Bob's motion?
Yes.
Second.
Having a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
Can I clarify, just, are we saying August 1, 2022 to August 1, or 2023?
No.
July 31st. That's what I thought you said, yeah, okay.
Okay, we have the new job description for the treasurer in old business. Curious, do we know of the highlighted sections, is that specific to board policies, or do you know?
I don't know, I have to look at it. Do you want me to open it up here? The highlighted items are things that were not on the former job description.
Okay.
Things that she is currently doing.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Okay, one thing that I did ask specifically, and it's not designated on here, is that this is an appointed position. Because whoever is appointed needs to understand that that position is theirs by appointment and that they don't necessarily apply for it.
So are you suggesting we add some language about your appointment?
I do.
Under terms of appointment.
Right, that's what I had asked for the last time it was brought.
So if we add tracers to be appointed annually by the Board of Trustees?
Correct. Definitely.
That would suffice.
Yes. That would suffice.
Then I would move approval with that added language.
For a second.
Hearing a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We do have consent agenda items, first being minutes of the previous meetings. Does anyone have any questions, comments, points of discussion on the minutes for the special meeting, the budget hearing for the norms and protocol workshop?
I do not.
No, David, any? Okay. And we've broken out the minutes from the board committees because we'll be accepting those minutes. We're not necessarily approving them. We have the HR report. Does anyone have any questions or comments on the HR report?
Oh, can I just make one request? Like the very first item in the HR report under the resignations, and I'm not saying names, I promise. I don't know who this is, I mean, I can assume by the.
So I'm not seeing that the resignations were included in the board book?
They are.
They are?
Yeah.
Where, where are those located?
Is it not this one right here?
Oh, so I'm sorry, I'm not able to view that. So on the resignations there, we'll go back and look at the board book memo real quick.
Well, we were actually given five resignation letters. There are only four persons listed.
One of them might be one that was consented.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Oh, the one that is the first one in our list is the first one on that list. You can kind of.
Yeah.
But, yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's kind of what I concluded.
Yeah.
Based on the legibility.
Does that help you?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Because a lot of them, you know, they come from the principals and they'll say who it's in reference to sometimes if it's not clear. But on that one, it just wasn't.
And then we also have the regular and special bills for the consent agenda. Were there any questions, comments, or concerns on any of the bills?
Nope.
Do you, Lisa, by chance, know why there were significant credits from the city of Rathdrum for each month?
I do not know of that.
Okay.
For sure.
Okay.
So I will follow up with Brian. My wonder is, we had the water main out here that was leaking.
Right.
I'm wondering if they went back and credited some of what they charged us.
Okay.
I will verify that with Brian.
Okay, that'd be great, be great to have an understanding.
Yep.
I mean, I appreciate the credit, I was just curious why we received it. Any further discussion or comments on the consent agenda?
Nope, I do not.
I am.
I would move to approve it, the consent agenda as presented.
A second.
Hearing a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to one new business, the first item is the organizational chart. Any comments, questions, or just points of discussion on the organizational chart?
Full color.
I love it.
Nope, it looks great, I just saw one little thing that Michelle in her wordsmithing and me with formatting. We're a great critical team, I guess. Under our Title I consultant teacher, the name comes first and every single other one, the title comes first and then the name.
Good catch. Thank you for saying that, because I'm like, I'm not going to say it.
I know it's a simple thing, it's just. Yeah, might as well say, say it if it's.
Well, it's a quick fix.
Other than that, it looks great, it looks really good, it's very clear.
It really was a test.
Yeah, to see if we were actually looking at it. I know.
It will come back before you because we are in the process of hiring three people who will go on this board chart. So once those people are in place, we'll bring it back, just as an update. And you'll notice that the armed guards are no longer called armed guards. They are armed district safety specialists.
I noticed that.
Nice, ads, lovely.
Congratulations.
They add to the safety of our school, they're ads.
Very nice. Okay, well, we do need to take action on the organizational chart. I will move to approve it as presented with that one little correction.
I'll say.
Having a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. And moving on to new curriculum, we have a personal finance math class. As a reminder, this class was actually implemented at Lickland as an elective this past year, and Timberlake would like to add it to their course list as an actual math credit for the fall of twenty twenty-two. They're using the same curriculum and resources that we've already approved.
This gives one more option for, so the language in the law, well, up until this year required four years of math, that has changed, but our counselors still really encourage our students to take that, their math in their senior year, especially if they're going into any kind of a program. For post-secondary, and this just gives them one more option for math. And there is, there is a strong desire from a lot of people within our community for our kids to have access to personal finance
Great.
at the high school level, so.
I think it's awesome.
Yeah, me too.
Everybody say aye.
I'm not seeing that great, and I think I know what it is, but could you give us a synopsis of, you know, the stuff listed?
Yeah, they will, they'll address credit, mortgages, tax, taxes, income taxes, actually building their own personal budget, retirement. It's, it's really, it's Dave Ramsey's work.
Thank you.
We also have a new Timberlake High School music course proposal, which looks to be more like it's stage and production. And that falls under music. I'm just curious.
Yes, I think that the, the production will be musical, not, not a play, but a musical.
Okay, okay. And then following that, we have the supplemental resources for board consideration. And Dr. Pasley has some information.
We did have one more parent provide some feedback today, specific to the ThriveLee.com, there were some concerns about some tenants of CRT, so it's not in your board consideration doc from parent feedback, cause I just got it today, but I just wanted to make sure you guys have that. And that's at the, closer to the bottom of the list.
So I do have, with regard to ThriveLee, from the teacher who is wanting to use it, just whatever intent is, so that you're aware of that as you make your decision. There is a, a part of the program that is about career exploration and career pathways, so she just wrote, the purpose would be to help students build a vision for their future based on their strengths, their interests, and their aspirations. And so, once students start to understand that what different career avenues they can take, they, she's hoping to tie that into why education is important right now. This is for the, our middle level academy that we are implementing next year. And then based on the career pathways that kids find interesting, her plan is to then bring in guest speakers and find some volunteer opportunities. So a part of it that she's interested in using is the career pathways.
Is there an emphasis in our middle school on career choice at the sixth grade level, seventh grade?
It's the eighth grade.
Okay.
Is where that, that, and then they tie the eighth grade careers exploration into the design of their four-year plan for high school.
Okay, so then is this solely for eighth grade when it's, when she's stating all middle school students?
It'll be just seventh and eighth grade.
Okay.
Because she'll be one teacher with the two grade levels, so this will, her plan is to tie this in because these are kids who struggled in the traditional middle school setting. So her hope is to get them excited about some career path and what that pathway through high school looks like, so that education matters in the middle school, that's the intent behind it. It's just to give them an opportunity to start to look at what do I want to do when I get down to school. And I have not delved into the actual program, so I can't speak to what else is on there.
Well, under their programs, they have career and technical education, social and emotional learning, gifted and talented, special education STEM, genius hours and passionate projects, early childhood and academic achievement. Are we buying into the whole? Kate and Cabunol?
No, she just wants the, she wants to.
Just career and technical?
Yeah, cause theirs social, emotional is specifically, cause that's our framework specifically, so.
And we don't know that it's carried into any of their other programs.
We can certainly do some more research if you'd like. I can reach out to the teacher and ask if there are other tools that would maybe have a more narrow focus if we're, we just aren't wanting to open certain doors.
Right, right.
I know that Jackie Durand uses a bunch of CTE stuff specifically for her FFA leadership classes. And the CTE, there's a lot of CTE material that she covers, and she uses a website, maybe talking to her and seeing if that is, would be appropriate for eighth grade students to, to use as well.
I can also reach out to some other districts in the state department and see if they have other curricular options that kind of are in line with that.
Do you have any other questions on the supplemental resources? Tina, we can entertain emotional curriculum.
I'll move to approve the supplemental resources list with the removal of the ThriveLee at this time.
What about the other courses?
Oh, and the, yes, and the court, sorry, I forgot, we were doing all of it together. Yes, and the approval of, as well as the approval of the new courses.
Sorry. Hearing a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to policy. Okay, student dress, we had tabled. We sent it out to parents and, sent it out to parents first, but when it came back around, we really talked to the administrators and got parent input specific to the language that's currently within there. And so, the biggest thing that came back was keep it short and sweet and don't use so many words. So, we did make modifications, and so that we could understand how short we were making it, because the other document was pages long because of all the cross-outs. This particular work in progress that was uploaded has everything removed from the previous one with all the cross-outs taken out. And then any new language we added is in red, and so you'll see that we revamped the dress code, and I did want to go on record, there was a parent that actually showed up, that's four uniforms, thank you, just want you off. But, yeah, we have, you know, the fact that, you know, the undergarments must be worn and shall not be visible, tube tops are not allowed, tank top straps must be two finger width, midriffs must not be exposed, skirts and dresses must be at a minimum length of mid-thigh, shorts must be a minimum length of mid-thigh, leg coverings, all of them, with holes above mid-thigh must not show skin, leg coverings must be worn at the waistline, shorts or shoes should be worn at all times, because there was concern about, you know, times they might have to take their shoes off. And then flags shall not be worn as capes. We also put the caveat language in there, which we thought it was there before, but it wasn't clear enough, that cheerleading, sports, and other school-directed uniforms are allowed to be worn at school. For spirit days, pep rallies, approved school functions, events, and other district-sponsored activities. So we're hoping that this language is clear enough for the students and clear enough for our staff to be able to enforce uniformly. Your, your wheels are turning.
Yeah, I, well, I just don't like the statement, undergarments must be worn, I mean, who's checking that? I understand the not being visible, I understand that, I just, I, I don't see the necessity of, of having that in there.
I, I respect that, that came from parents
Okay.
who had solicited their children. So, that wasn't from staff, and that wasn't from the policy committee, it was from students.
Interesting.
Right? So.
Maybe more a female thing than a male thing?
Probably, probably. I don't, I don't know.
They do not go in detail.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, that's, no, that's right feedback, I, yeah, I just was, I was like, mm.
Right, that addition came from.
How are we enforcing this, cause, yeah.
Yeah, I, you know, I guess maybe if someone's wearing something sheer and something's noticed and we just scooch them off to the office, I don't know.
Okay.
So.
What is a shoe?
What is a shoe?
Are flip-flops classified as shoes?
Why wouldn't they be?
I don't know, I'm just asking.
Well, socks are not shoes. But, again, that was something that was added by the parents, because I think we had previously, footwear should be worn at all times, should, and there was concern that it needed to say shoes. So we corrected it to what the parents and the children brought back to the policy committee.
So they're not wearing slippers to school?
Huh?
That's, so they wouldn't be wearing slippers to school?
Well.
Because that's footwear but not shoes, I guess.
Yes.
Right.
Footwear initially was just kind of trying to encompass anything you could put on your feet.
Yeah.
But let's keep it on the feet, but there was concern because, you know, what about the kids that have to take their shoes off to tape up their feet? Will you take it off and put it back on? I don't know, but that was what came back to the policy committee, and so we wanted to respect the efforts that were put into it, so they want shoes, they wanted to say shoes. And I would, because this policy is an annual review policy.
Yeah.
I would believe that we'll get through this year, and if the administration or staff have concerns, they're gonna bring it to the policy committee, cause we have to review this.
It won't take a full year to test it.
It never does, it's usually the first week of school.
As soon as they get those handbooks that has it
Yep.
laid out
Yes.
in, in color.
And then, yeah, we definitely, when the other language is all taken out, the, the cross-outs, the new cross-outs, I should say, this goes up to two pages, a little less shy of two pages, and we're keeping it as concise and as short as we possibly can.
You're to be commended for that work.
Yep.
That's not easy.
But we succeeded.
It looks good.
Okay.
And I like that the hats are inappropriate during the Pledge of Allegiance, National Anthem, and Veterans Day, I appreciate that very much.
That was one point of concern. I, I do want to bring this up, cause I don't think this is anything that any of the board actually thought about, is that when we put these types of restrictions with no hats, we have staff from other departments that walk around with hats on, and the kids are like, why? You know, that's not fair, and so I don't think any of us ever really thought about that. Because it's not in the employee handbook, the employees can't wear hats, you know, so respecting the fact that, you know, the parents were pretty, they really want this to communicate that we respect your growth. And that's what we're doing, so yeah, my big thing with allowing hats was I wanted to make sure that the respect of honoring the flag, our country, et cetera, that that's implemented.
That's perfect, this is, I, I like that very much, thank you.
You're welcome. But yes, I'm sure there will be lots of people very happy if they can keep their cap on when they go to school.
I know of two kiddos specifically.
There'll be a lot of teachers who will be happy.
To not have to enforce it.
Enforce it.
It's not a point of contention anymore. All right. The policy thirty-two eighty-five, relationship abuse and sexual assault, that policy is a new one, as is the thirty-two eighty-five procedure for addressing sexual assault. Those are, are two new policies. The student discipline one was a combined effort with our superintendent and the policy committee. We kind of went back to some of our roots of making sure that everything is, is handled the way it should be. We did lay out under temporary suspension, the due process of how we get to a temporary suspension, which is aligned with our threat levels, so that the administration has the ability to assess the threat and then act upon that. So if there isn't really anything, then, you know, they're able to handle it. If it's mid-level, then there's something more to it, and if there's, if it's high level, then it's definitely coming to the board. So, we put some clarification.
I like that progression of, yeah.
We, we worked really hard to make sure it was crystal clear for the principals also, because they struggled with when to, when to do what, so this.
When do I make that phone call?
Yep, I feel like this gives them a lot of direction.
Which, in creating this, we did bring the, we're not creating, but revising it, the written statement form, the behavioral support plan, which is a plan, not a contract, and the notice of temporary suspension documents, all those documents are included for our approval. So, we spent time on those as well.
Thank you for adding the baby products in this, too, very much.
Okay, so any conversation, comments, anything regarding the policies that are being presented?
Under the gun-free schools, the first sentence of that says, "A student who uses, possesses, possesses controls or transfers a firearm or any..."
possesses, possesses, controls, or transfers a firearm or any object that can be reasonably be considered to be a, to be or look like a firearm may be expelled for a period of not less than one year." Shouldn't this be on school grounds or something? Cause doesn't say anything about having them, having them in the school. I mean, that's like, half the kids in our district would be expelled from school just for using a firearm when they go hunting?
Where are you reading that?
Right, under gun-free schools, the very first sentence just says that if they use one, they're, or possess one, it doesn't specify on school, like, we all know that, but it doesn't specify on school.
On school grounds or at school district sponsored events.
Okay, yeah, it does, it does scream it all throughout, the possession of a weapon on school property. But we should put that in there.
Just in that sentence somewhere. I know it's already kind of a.
Cause it states clearly in the possession, "Who possesses a firearm or deadly or dangerous weapon while on school property or in those portions of any building, stadium, or other structure on school grounds, which at the time of the violation are being used." Yeah. And then after the one-two, it says, "In a school building or on school property." So yeah, we can, we can revise that language.
They want to include or any school-sponsored activities. Well, what happens, for example, if they're on a trip someplace, they're not on school property, but they're.
Good, good point, yeah.
But supposing it doesn't appear on the bus, it appears, you know, at another school or, or, and they stop to have lunch.
Hotel room, right.
If they're engaged in a school-sponsored activity, it should apply.
Yes, it does. I'm trying to see where it says that.
I just think it should be in the, at least in the first paragraph, let alone quite possibly the first sentence.
Right, so it looks like the possession of a weapon on school property. Cause it does say, in reading the paragraph, "It shall be unlawful for a person to possess a firearm or other deadly or dangerous weapons while on school property or in those portions of any building, stadium, or other structure on school grounds, which at the time of the violation are being used for an activity sponsored by or through a school in this state or while riding school-provided transportation. This also applies to students of schools while attending or participating in any school-sponsored activity, program, or event regardless of location." So I do believe that covers.
That does cover it.
Yeah, but it sounds like we also need to kind of mimic that language up under the gun-free school zones.
Maybe they were just assuming that because the title is gun-free schools, that there would be an assumption that that's what you're talking about, but I think it, it would warrant being spelled out.
Yeah, we can, we can revise that.
We got one other potential exception. We did have some teams that travel out of state. And it talks about in this state.
By or through a school in this state or while riding school-provided transportation.
The last sentence we covered.
Yeah.
They're part of the situation.
Well, but if you think, well, an activity sponsored by a school, so if our school is.
I'm not.
By or through a school, okay. I think we're covered.
Yeah.
Okay. The, the thing is, is if it's a school, regardless of where it's at, you can't do it. So do you guys want us to pull out the student discipline and bring it back at the next board meeting? Or do you think that you've given enough direction that we can make that change and approve it with the change added for that language to include?
I think so. I think we're good to approve it with the.
I think you could just copy what's down lower, write into that.
Yeah. Okay, so we can entertain a motion on the board policies?
I move to approve the board policies with the corrections or changes as discussed.
Hearing the motion, in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
Can I ask a question about those two policies? So just because the magnitude of them in their bag and the student dress is a really big deal, once we make the changes to the student discipline, can we send that out like in a Skylar, just so we're getting it out to parents and they're aware of it? I just feel like those two policies specifically, we made some pretty big changes to, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Moving on to the state holidays. Trustee Bane, you brought up that the state of Idaho now recognizes or observes, well, for this year, they observed Juneteenth and next year, it's part of their calendar. So we need to decide if we're going, how we're going to, if we're going to.
That becomes a paid holiday.
Thank you. Or if it's just an observed holiday.
So currently, for all of our, for our year-round employees, they have eight paid holidays. Our school year employees have seven. We, we do, as a district, we do not have Veterans Day as a paid holiday because we want our kids in school so that they're actively honoring our veterans on that day. So we, we do have the ability to make some decisions about which ones we want to have as paid and which ones we don't. So I, I, I guess the question is, do we want nine paid holidays, I guess, in a calendar year?
Well, what I'm curious about, I don't know if you know the answer, maybe Brooke can answer it. In twenty-twenty-three, it's no longer an observed holiday, it's an actual holiday, according to what the Idaho State Holidays is. I know this was entered via proclamation from the governor. It, so are we allowed to make it an observed holiday even though it's an actual state holiday, not bracketed as observed?
Well, Veterans Day is a state holiday and we choose to be in school for that.
Right, but it's a bracketed observed on the state list, so I don't know if that.
So like with Veterans Day, I do believe it does state in statute that if we are in session on those days, that we actually have to be.
Shall be observed.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to do some commemorative activity.
But we aren't in session, we would never be in session for Juneteenth.
It's true. Well, at least not all, the entire staff.
The district staff.
Right.
The kids.
Yeah. Our kids will be here.
Well, summer school.
It's true, summer school.
I would not see that as a paid holiday.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we can not have it, we can have it a non-paid holiday.
I guess I would want to see what our other districts are doing, if this is the only one, so I don't know.
I just, maybe we can do a little bit of research to determine, to answer your question, can we take it as a non-paid holiday?
Yeah.
And if we don't, what does that look like if it's something that statutorily is going to become observed?
Right.
Because does that mean we have to teach to it?
Yeah. Cause it's not in the statute yet.
Right.
And I couldn't find.
It's not sure what our community is going to tell us.
Yeah.
Community's going to feel about that? So we, maybe we ask some questions and get some clarity around it and then keep bringing that back in August.
Yeah.
We looked through multiple policies and it's not listed at this point.
No.
And multiple statutes, it's not listed at this point.
Right. Well, I tried to see where in legislative session it was and it wasn't, it was through the government, it was the governor's proclamation.
Yeah.
I was like, oh, well, what are we doing with that now? So, okay.
So for, for right now, based on the governor's proclamation, it's an, it's an observed.
It's observed, but the next year, it's no longer observed, it's an actual holiday.
Is it in statute?
Not yet. So I don't know what the language is going to be.
Is that what comes through the legislative session then?
Right.
See if they put it in.
I know.
Okay, so we'll do a little bit of checking on some things. And then we can maybe have some conversation.
Okay. The reason they say observed is because that's the day that it is observed, because the, otherwise the actual holiday falls on the weekend.
Right, yeah.
That's why they say observed, that's what observed means.
June nineteenth was on Sunday, so this year it was observed on Monday, the twentieth.
Next year, it's on a Monday, so that's the day that it is.
But they do that for.
Veterans Day also.
Veterans Day.
But if the eleventh is.
It's the nineteenth, or the.
The eleventh.
The eleventh.
If the eleventh is on a Saturday, it's observed on Friday. If it's on Sunday, it's observed on Monday.
Just like if you look at twenty-twenty-two, New Year's Day is observed on December thirty-first because that was a Friday. They always, so if it falls on a Saturday, they observe it on Friday. If it's on a Sunday, they observe it on Monday. And that's why it says observed, because that means that that's the day it's being recognized as a holiday for a working week holiday.
Yeah, so banks were closed on Monday, the twentieth, because that's the day it was observed.
Okay. So we had to note that December thirty-first, we observed New Year's Day, which was a Friday. Okay, I get what you're saying, I don't.
Yeah, and that's, I guess for, for us, the purpose of that is, we've identified New Year's Day as a paid holiday, so if New Year's Day is on a Saturday, then the staff gets the paid holiday on Friday.
Okay. I get what you're saying.
Paid for that.
Okay, I'm thinking more of the, I guess, the commemorative days as opposed to required legal holidays.
Right.
Okay. All right, so we do need to figure out if we can just make it a observed, a commemorative day, not a, not a holiday.
Paid holiday.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm confident that we get to choose which days we want to have as paid holidays as an employer, because if we couldn't, we would not be able to be in school on Veterans Day.
Well, that's by statute, it's in the statute, that if, you know, we have to observe it by commemorating it.
Right.
So, yeah.
Because.
And Veterans Day is the only one that is that way, but that doesn't mean that that's the only holiday that we provide to.
Right, exactly. So we'll do some checking because if we.
Do we do Columbus Day off too?
No.
So it would be like Columbus Day if we chose to not, not, not give it as a paid holiday. It would be like Columbus Day.
Right.
It's a state holiday, but we.
And we don't.
We don't pay, it's not a paid day off.
And we don't commemorate it in class, cause it's not something statutorily we're required to do.
I think better, better statement than my stature.
It is.
It is. Because it's that important. But I would be interested to kind of try to figure out if this is going to end up in that way, because the question in my mind is, do we just take the day off then? Or do we require that we're going to teach to it? And I'm just not how sure how palatable that would be to our kind of members. So we'll do some checking and we'll bring it back on August, August 11th, probably.
Yeah, I would like that.
Okay, so then I make a motion to table the state holidays to include Juneteenth. Not this time.
Move to table to the hours meeting, three in a minute.
She motioned, so are you seconding? Michelle just motioned.
I'm sorry.
I appreciate it.
I'm sorry.
Give me a second, mom.
I was focused.
He thought you were calling for a motion, not making the motion.
That's actually what I do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What was your motion? To table?
To table it, yes.
I'll second that.
Thank you. I'm a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to the IEL admission cost increase.
So the activities directors for the IEL League, which is the inland empire league, and that is the league that Lakeland High School participates in, made the determination because the cost of officials has gone up significantly to increase gate costs, to try to generate a little bit more revenue to help pay the increased cost for officials. They can't mandate that we do that, and so because we're increasing cost to families, I felt it was prudent to bring it to the board. Mr. Everland at Timberlake High School, Timberlake plays in the Intermountain League, and they are not having the same conversation, however, he feels they're in the same boat with regard to officiating costs. And so he, his request would be that if we, if we decide that we're going to do this at Lakeland High School, he would like to just have it be a district-wide for the high school to decision.
Who pays for officials?
The, well, right now, the district, because it is part of the levy.
So as a moot point, would I argue that.
For this year.
For the schools.
But as we start to talk about what we're doing for the levy next year, this becomes part of that conversation.
Right.
Where do the gate fees go? I mean, do we get them or do we pay the IEL?
No, they're ours, they stay in the district. Right now, they stay at the schools.
Okay.
They do use the, the gate, we have several, football makes the most gate, obviously. But we have some non-revenue generating activities or athletics, so the swim team doesn't generate any money. Our dance and cheerleaders don't generate any money. Drama generates very little money. And so those gate dollars can, can be distributed to some of the other teams to help offset some costs.
Well, given that they can be, are they?
That was going to be my question too.
I mean, I'd really like to know if they are being distributed.
We had this question yesterday at district leadership team, because we went through the L accounts. I asked Brian to kind of give me a little bit of schooling on, on the L accounts because the question keeps coming up. And he was able to show me where they had taken gate money and did a journal transfer into teams that wouldn't have generated the gate money. So I, I'm fairly confident that that is happening.
Okay. Well, we do need to work on what's being presented to us on, for accountings.
Yes.
So that will become more transparent with the monies that are actually being brought in and where they're going.
And that's why I sat with him yesterday to do that, so that now I feel like I can sit with you and, and you can help me craft what you want that to look like.
Okay.
And I have a better understanding of what I'm looking at.
Okay.
So the IEL's argument is because officials' costs are going up, we need to raise gate fees and resets officials' costs, who, what they charge.
I'm not sure if that's IHSAA or if. I'm not sure if that's I H S A A or if that's the league. But I do know last year, they struggled to get officials to officiate because of what we were paying. And so there was definitely, like every other labor entity, a need to increase the fees to people. And the other schools who are in our league, I'm not sure that they have a levy that is supporting their schools with athletics. And so that's why this came.
I think we ought to be a leader in holding the line. Don't change. Those kinds of things have long-term ripple ramifications when we increase fees and things like that, you know what I'm saying?
I do.
And if we're going to move forward, in the manner that we were discussing the other day, we have to hold the line.
Fair enough.
Because we'll be less expensive, more people will come to see us.
Is that, what is it, five dollars for adults, three for kids?
Yeah.
Yep.
I think they should let the kids in free. Because then they'll spend more money at concessions.
Well, the kids buy their A S B, yeah, they buy their A S B cards and then they don't have to pay, I mean, they pay the forty dollars.
But that's just the. That's just the high school and junior high, right? What about the younger kids that don't have A S B cards in there?
Right, it's just that you're.
Yeah.
It's actually just the high school kids who have A S B cards. I don't think the junior high have A S B cards that would work at, at the high school. I'm not sure of that, but I don't remember that from my girls.
I think sometimes if like they're on the junior high basketball team and they're coming to watch the high school basketball team, they will let them in for, they'll give them a list of money to.
They group show their school I P, they'll let them in if they play the sport. But, but that's not for.
Right, that's, yeah, no, no.
Yep. The principals did want the board to know that veterans get into all activities free.
Yes.
Charge.
Do they still do the senior cards?
Uh, actually, I think, I, I don't know, my test, but.
Yeah, they give.
Well, they, they had them, I just don't know.
Yep.
They did have them. You just don't go to games. Or is it? Yeah, they go to the school and, and get issued a card that they carry with them and they can show that at the gate at any gate. And it's free for any senior.
Oh, that's cool.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I thought that there was conversation at one point of, of doing away with those, so I didn't know if that had happened or not.
In the text from Ryan was, senior, seniors, not senior in high school, but senior citizens.
Senior citizens.
And veterans do get to attend all activities free.
Okay. Well, what is your recommendation with respect to raising fees at this juncture?
Well, I tend to agree with Trustee Jones in that the district actually is putting the bill for the officials. And we're using levy monies to do that, which are already being provided by our taxpayers.
Right.
So we can revisit this when we make some decisions about what we want the levy to look like for, when we rerun it. If we, if we decrease the support for athletics to decrease the amount that we ask our patrons to shoulder, then it makes sense to me that we would move that forward. But at this point, I, I feel like it's double dipping a little bit. If we are collecting taxes to support athletics and we're going to raise the cost of.
Right.
Attending.
It would be double dipping.
I agree.
That's probably not going to be a popular sentiment, I'm just telling you that, but.
I'm sure you know that the building Red's schools understand that we're raising out there.
Yes.
It's important for all of us to be together on what we're going to be moving forward. And that, this is just a piece of that puzzle.
Absolutely, yes, yeah. I know they're trying to be on the same page with the rest of their league.
Sure.
But we're not responsible for the rest.
We have been on stage in the past at times, so that's all right.
We like to be out of sync, that's why we are what we are.
That's right, we're going to lead the way.
That's right.
I will notify the principals and the activities directors in three seconds.
If we weren't leaders, our schools would have been closed.
Yep.
That's true. Or they would have been, kids would have been masked the full time. So do we need to do vote and do a full action on that?
We do.
Okay. Do you want to make the motion since it was here?
That we're leaving at the same? Yes, I would happily make the motion that we keep our gate fees at the current rate, three to five.
I second it.
Motion and a second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to the capital project funds.
So because we no longer have the plant facility levy, and we did move that two point eight million dollars out of the general fund into a special fund set aside for capital projects for the board to make some decisions about. One of my conversations with CFO Wallace was that there's no longer a line item in the budget anywhere for things that come up that were unanticipated. And so we're just requesting that of that two point eight million that's in that fund, that we can set aside five hundred thousand of it for unanticipated repairs and expenditures. And whatever is spent obviously stays in that fund and is available for capital projects.
Wouldn't that have needed to, to have been done through the budget process?
I understand.
Not necessarily, it's, it's, it's all within the umbrella of the capital projects. What they're suggesting is because, if I understand correctly, they're suggesting we reserve that amount, like the five hundred thousand, for the unforeseen items that may come up, which they do over the course of a year. You know, oh, what is going to blow up or, you know, electrical panel shorts out or whatever. And you've got to be able to take care of those things, but they're, they're really capital items.
So just as a, just as an, an example, Trustee Bain, I did ask Brian to kind of go back over the last few years and give me a sense of how much we've spent on unanticipated types of things. So in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, we had three hundred and three thousand, four hundred and ninety-six dollars in unanticipated costs. Eighty-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-three of that were vehicles. And two hundred and eighteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two were facilities cost. In twenty, last year, twenty-one, twenty-two, we spent a total of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-two. Forty-seven thousand of that was vehicles and two hundred and forty thousand was facilities. And we had HVAC, window repairs, twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, there was a lot of roof repair in there. So I did share this unanticipated repairs list with the board clerk and asked her to put it into your shared drive so you all have access to it. I didn't have it early enough to be able to include it as a link on the agenda. But that's just kind of a for example.
But I thought we do have our plant facilities, this last year, this year is the last year.
But those dollars are in that two point eight million, so we don't have any, anything that's. We had some of the plant facility was already encumbered because the board made some decisions about some projects. And the eighty-seven thousand or whatever was left of that is part, I think, of that two point eight million. I can verify that with CFO Wallace, but it's, even if that's still in the plant facility levy, it's a very small amount. Compared to what we've been typically spending.
And, and I think that if I recall correctly, a budget timing recommended that we transfer that into this new fund.
That's what I thought he said.
So it's all together. But along with the lights being transferred from general.
We already have four hundred and fifteen thousand in S R three funds. We have plant facility funds with capital outlay of nine hundred and seven thousand dollars. Like my point of moving these dollars wasn't just so that we could just start nickel and diming away at that money and have it all of a sudden gone. The point was to have a reserve, replacement reserve fund. And I, it's not going to take very long, five hundred thousand dollars a year, and it's going to be gone. I'd rather face the unforeseen as they come instead of just throwing five hundred thousand dollars. It's already there, I mean, it's already, if it's already in the budget and available, what is the point of moving it?
Well, I don't think they're suggesting moving it.
Well, they want to set it aside, set it aside where, for what? It's al, if it's already in the budget, it's already set aside. I, I don't understand.
I, I think they're just trying to alert us upfront that every year, we're going to have some unforeseen expenses. The one that I'm a little mystified by is the purchase of vehicles. I don't know what circumstances we run into where we have an emergency to purchase a vehicle.
We've had situations, and when I say vehicle, I'm using that loosely because it, it's also the twenty-four thousand dollar mowers that we have to, if, if, we just had one that died. But we did have a vehicle that, like, they were driving down Highway forty-one and dropped the whole back axle. And so that there's repairs and those kinds of things, not necessarily going out and buying a vehicle. Although, I do think that I saw one in twenty twenty-one where we did buy a maintenance van. But they had no plans on buying.
You know, I, I hear what you're saying, right, Ed, I'm not suggesting that we ignore what we've already established. As long as, as we're aware that there will be instances where things come up that they'll take out funds to, to deal with the situation. And it's, you know, that, if we just leave it as is, that it oozes us to watch the bill list every month to figure out which ones of those, you know, when those are happening, but we should be doing that anyway. Conversely, if I, once again, if I understand it correctly, Brian's concern might be that we earmark, earmark all of the two point eight, which restricts how those funds gets used, get used. And then they have nothing to deal with those emergency situations when they come up. So they're just.
My point was not to earmark the two point eight million, other than to say that it's for capital outlay. What would have happened had we chosen not to earmark the two point eight million? What would have happened with respect to the fact that?
We, a, a lot of what we're already planning on doing, I'm not sure, Trustee Bain. I know when we talked about this at the budget workshop, I'm not so I'm trying to remember exactly. Because I think there was some conversation about having it set aside so that the board had discretion over which projects we choose to do. But I also think you were trying to build a balance in there to be able to acquire land and do the things that we need to do.
Right.
To, for schools, right?
Yeah.
But it's two totally different things.
Right. And that's what I, I don't want to happen, is that this is nickel and dimed away. And then we, you know, we have two point eight million dollars right now, I know it's not enough to build a new school, but it's a start.
It is a start.
And it's a start that we didn't previously have.
So.
It just reduces that ask when it does become time to, to build a new school, if we do build up a.
Well, that's about the point. I guess my understanding was more, you know, we went through, at, at one point, you know, the, the kind of laundry list of capital projects that are outstanding, so to speak, but need attention at some point in time. And my understanding was that, you know, when we had a block of money, we would begin to try to whittle that list down. You know, whether it's doors at the junior high or heating systems or roof replacement or whatever it is, those are all things that have to happen year after year in order to maintain the buildings and, and keep the operation going, the physical plant operation going. So, you know, once again, you know, we got into a box here in terms of what funds are available. And we've got to sort out how we're, how we're going to handle it. I mean, if you, if you make that as a savings account, savings account, even in your own personal situation, that is always there for emergencies. You know, I think they're saying there will be some of those come along. And, you know, if, if we want them to come to us each time they have an emergency and say, can we do this?
But they have to anyway, because capital expenditures have to be approved by the board regardless. Right? Over a certain dollar.
More so than any other.
Right, over a certain dollar, I guess, you know, like we had the water line break out here. That was six thousand dollars that we used out of the plant facility fund. And we couldn't wait for the next board meeting to make, to get permission to do that, that's something we did. So that's, that's how we're thinking about the emergency type things are going to. If it's not an emergency and it's a large number, obviously, we're coming to you first for approval. But sometimes we have to make some decisions and take care of things because they have to be taken care of. We, we have the long-range planning committee that will be coming together with Rebecca, has reached out and we're scheduling that for August tenth for the first meeting. And part of the, our scope of work is going to be talking about the plant facility levy and what do we do with that. Because I'm not sure how we handle what Bob's talking about with regard to just maintaining our buildings and being preventative. If anytime we have a fund balance above sixteen percent, we're moving it into that and we're trying not to touch it. It doesn't, there's not, there's just no line item in the budget for those kinds of preventative maintenance and taking care of facilities. So till we get to the point where we're, we know what that looks like, this at least gives us the ability to handle things if they come up.
Well, according to the budget that was approved, on the budget list that we were given, under capital outlays, it was two point two nine.
Which I think is the transfer into that, is that?
No, no, I can tell you what, what, I have it, I wrote it all down today. I have fifty thousand in the facility fund, I have plant facility fund of nine hundred and seventy, or nine hundred and seven thousand. S R three funds of four hundred and fifteen thousand, child nutrition has four hundred and ninety-eight thousand. Child nutrition has four hundred and ninety-eight thousand, and the bus depreciation of four hundred and twenty thousand.
So remember the nine hundred thousand, Brian showed that the balance was there, but we have already encumbered a lot of those dollars. They just haven't hit the books yet. There was a, it was a very small balance that, that we had left there.
Eighty-seven thousand, I think, or something.
That, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, it was pretty small.
Well, I guess where I'm, I'm kind of, so the two point two nine, I never say those right, so the two million, two hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars um, of capital outlay, you're saying is already composed? Because it was my understanding that that two point eight came out of the unappropriated balances of thirteen million, one, twenty-two, five, fourteen. Then we were taking it out of the unap- that two point eight million was coming out of the unappropriated balances.
Yes.
Correct. So in support of what Randy's saying, we have this capital outlay of two point two.
So let me double check with Brian and make sure.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah.
If we have this two point two in capital outlay and we're taking that two point eight out of the fund balance, the unappropriated fund balance of thirteen million, how have we offset the balance? It doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, let me double check on that.
They're two different pots of money.
That's the way I do it. When that's the case, then we don't, but that doesn't make any sense to me that that wasn't the conversation I had.
What, what's the two point two you were referencing?
See, here's the, this is the, this is the school budget on all funds. Right here, we have capital outlay at two point two nine zero. And then we took that two point eight out of the unappropriated balances of thirteen point one. So what I'm trying to rectify is if we're taking unappropriated monies and setting that aside to build up that fund, what's going on up here with this two point two nine?
That's, that's broken out other, oh, under the different funds as that nine hundred and seven thousand was, is already pretty much spent all the eighty, about eighty-seven thousand dollars. The SR three funds, there's four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars there that I do not believe is earmarked at all.
I don't think, the only SR funds I think Brian earmarked were the, the seven hundred thousand that he set aside to hire additional staff. Should we need that in lieu of an emergency levy.
Right. And then child nutrition has basically five hundred thousand dollars of its own funds, but that has to stay there. That has to stay with that program. So I get that, and then the bus depreciation obviously is.
So are you saying that two point two million that Michelle's alluding to is the balance of those funds?
That's, yeah, that's, this is the breakdown of that two point two mil-.
Okay.
Two million.
Okay.
These, this is how much is under each of the different funds.
Okay.
That's the total in all those.
Okay.
These added up come to that two point two.
And all the other funds, the segmented capital outlay totals that two point two?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Dedicated to different programs.
So I guess then another way to circle around this is, again, had we not taken the two point eight out of the unappropriated, that's right, balances?
That's right, can't see.
Um, where would this five hundred thousand dollars have come from?
Right there.
From the unappropriate, so why can't it still not come out of the unappropriated fund balance?
It could, it would just reduce our fund balance by five hundred thousand, which the board could direct us to do instead of um, using the two point eight million that's in the capital outlay.
Okay. Well, I guess my whole point in, in just tossing this out there is that it wasn't brought up for discussion at the budget meeting that, you know, we're, we've got this.
We would need this because we've always done it and now we.
Right.
That was my, that's why I said, why wasn't this done during the budget? I mean, that was my.
Right.
First statement with this is why wasn't that done during the budget process?
Yeah, and I think it might have just been an oversight because we had been having the plant facility levy, that's where those dollars would come from. And then the recognition that, oh, we, we, we don't have those, those have expired and we moved those dollars out, so.
Okay.
I don't remember what the six, I mean, if we took that two point eight million out, leaving sixteen percent, and I took another five hundred thousand out, what does, I, I just wonder what.
We have to be between eight and sixteen.
Right, so it wouldn't put us under the eight, so it would still keep us within our.
Oh, yeah, you'd be fine.
Yeah.
And I think we were actually a little bit over sixteen percent, it seems like sixteen point six seven or something.
You want to do it that way?
I'd rather.
That's fine, I don't have a problem.
Yeah, I'd rather do it that way. So in a sense, you're asking us to allocate the five hundred thousand, but we don't have to take it out of the two point eight that we've set aside. We can take it out of the.
Specifically, the request was out of the two point eight million, but yes, well, we can do it.
Okay.
Oh, no, just kidding.
So can I ask a quick question then? Um, uh, if the board is going to do, direct us to take it from the fund balance, does Brian need to then amend the budget and bring that back to the board so that you can?
You don't have to ask any more questions.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I, I don't think so, but uh.
Yeah, I would.
Let me see if it's in the. Go back to that.
Brian needs to learn not to in this board meetings because things happen when he's not here.
I'm surprised he's not here.
He's at a concert.
May I ask who?
I can never remember. It is.
Brian Holmes or something?
Zach. Zach, Brian. I knew there was a Brian in there.
A lot of people have that tonight.
Well, I suppose we'll give him a little grace because he, he always shows up, doesn't always have a lot of fun on Wednesday.
Yeah.
The first Wednesday, first second Wednesday.
I can ask him that question and then we'll come prepared if that's the direction we're going.
Yes.
Where do we leave that discussion entirely?
Sure.
May I clarify because I'm, I'm hearing a little different discussion than what I have an understanding of with respect to the set aside of those funds. So i- is it the intent of the board that that money be set aside indefinitely? And, and not utilized except for an identified purpose sometime way in the future? Or can those funds be utilized for the list that we looked at earlier on, what needs in plant?
Because there are no monies in the budget to address those without that.
I need, I think we need to get a fix on that so the district administration has a proper guidance going forward.
Yeah, we need to set some kind of priority, you know.
Right.
Did you understand my question?
I do.
Okay.
I do. I'm apprehensive to say it has to go here or it has to go there. But I do believe it was our intent when we set the money aside was to start having the ability um, for future growth. I don't know necessarily that it was completely earmarked for the current capital projects that need to occur. Because it was my understanding that the capital outlay was. So there's obviously still a disconnect from me.
Surprise.
Well, and if we need to split it this much to here and this much to here, maybe that just needs to be the discussion. Okay, we have this, you know, this year, we just threw it all in one spot just to say, okay, we are making that, we are taking that step to say this. Right.
Yeah.
Which is a good one.
But now we can say, you know, further discussion for that two point eight is, how do we split it up? Do we split it up for projects for preventative maintenance and, you know, projects that need to be done now? And put some away to address that growth issue as well?
Right.
How much into, yeah, to, to split, but.
We'll have to have another conversation on this.
Okay, so just bring it back from there, Jen, or something.
Bring it back, yeah.
Let's table it. I'll for it.
I moved to table the, sorry, I got it out of that. The discussion on that five hundred thousand dollars. Oh, no, we, we're just tabling, nope, never mind. I, I do not strike that, just ignore that. We're just going to table that for further discussion.
Because we don't.
Capital project expense, yeah, okay. So do we need to move, make a motion for that?
Make a motion to table it, yes.
I moved to.
Sorry, are we tabling the, the discussion about the five hundred thousand? Because I thought we may have just talked about doing that out of the fund balance.
If we don't have to do a budget amendment to do that. So we need to find out from Brian if we need to do a budget amendment or not on that. I mean, I don't know.
Well, is this something that needs to be approved tonight?
We can, okay, so I see why you're, I, I'm sorry, I misunderstood what you were asking.
I didn't know if there's some.
That's why I was confused too, it was like, okay, so do we stick with the five hundred thousand coming out of the unappropriated?
Right.
And table the rest of the discussion for the two point eight million for another time?
Right.
Okay, so yes, where I will move to approve the two point eight, or the five hundred thousand dollars to come out of unappropriated fund balance, and we will table the discussion regarding the two point eight. But that did, that wasn't supposed to be in the action item anyway, right?
No, it wasn't.
Sure.
Hearing the motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Last item for action is the legal service agreement. I received a phone call from Megan that they were raising their prices. She was just giving me a heads up, so I asked her to put it in a contract so that the rest of the board can read it um, and determine, you know, if we want to accept it or, or what we want to do with this. So I did not feel inappropriate to be like, okay, so.
No, this is good, we needed to update this anyway, so.
Yeah, because the other one was two thousand and sixteen, I think, or eighteen.
I'm good with this.
Keeping in mind, they're probably charged by the quarter hour or by ten minutes.
It's by like one, yeah, yeah. So when you call, had it mapped out thirty seconds or less.
Don't ask how they're feeling, how are you today?
Yeah, yeah, no question. I had the best attorney though, she hardly charged me. All right, so if there's no further discussion or questions, comments on the legal agreement, I'll understand motion.
I've moved to approve the contract with, for legal services with Lian O'Donnell.
A second.
Having a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries, moving into discussion items. And let the board know we have fifteen minutes left for discussion items. All right, the first item for discussion is the metal detecting wand use. Go ahead.
So we've had a request from both Timberlake High School and Lincoln High School to um, have some policy in place and allow to use a metal detecting wand, which um, I'm not in favor of, but I am bringing it because it was, I was asked to have a discussion with the board. Um, my, their concern is, is that we have some kids who are on um, behavior plans right now who have made some sort of a threat. And so there's, they're feeling a lot of onus on, on individual people to be able to say to the administration, this person is safe to be in school today, based on a visual kind of check. So I understand why they are wanting it. My question is, okay, you, you wand them and it goes off, now what? We're not strip searching kids, and so what do you do with that? So I'm not sure that it, how helpful it would be. I guess that's my concern is what do you do when it's showing something and we don't have access to what it's showing? Um, I, I think it puts us in a little bit of a precarious situation. I guess it does say to, I mean, they could say to the administrators then, well, that something's going off, I don't know what it is, so I'm going to say they're not safe to be at school today. But.
Well, they could ask the, the student.
We've just had situations where they, like a female will actually have vape in their hand and the administrator asks for it and they will put it in their bra. And then the parents are called and asked to retrieve it and the parents will refuse and take the kid home. So um, whatever, if we're going to allow, and I just want to have really clear parameters about how it's going to be used and what we do in the event that the kid refuses and they go home. I mean, the thing is, if they're.
Same as going to a courthouse, right?
And this is only for, this isn't for the entire student body, this is only for situations where somebody is having to make the determination if somebody is safe or not.
Right, and we have the behavior plan that you just approved. And part of, if we were going to use that, it would be listed on there, on the behavior plan. Um, and parents have to then sign off that they agree to it and so does the student.
That's a surgeon, surges, they consent to surges.
So if we're going to put it in place, I think there, we need to put policy in place.
Yeah, we need to put policy in place. I'm not a big fan of it. I think it gives a really bad um, perception and I don't want children targeted. I say children, meaning the little high school people. But I, I just don't want, and maybe targeted is too strong of a word, but I don't want certain kids to be known as the wanted kids. I just think it just sets up such a negative. That being said, I can absolutely respect the fact that our armed guards are in positions to make judgment decisions that could potentially affect the entire student population. So I'm kind of, I'm on the fence on this one.
Yeah.
Because I'm, I'm not, I'm not for it, I don't like it, but I can respect the position that they're in and what they're asking for. I just, my concern is, is, you know, how are we going to, um, you know, we put a policy in place about it. How detailed is that policy going to have to be?
So that we're not done for recalls.
Exactly. And I, I don't want to put our district in positions of liability because, you know, we're doing things and I just, to me, it's a big, it's not as simple as going to the courthouse and walking through the metals.
So just, it's just something to kind of think about. I just traveled to Alaska, I walked through the, you know, the x-ray machine or whatever. And I had absolutely nothing on me that was metal, but something showed up and so I had to get padded down, so. Um, I, and when you're a girl, um, there's.
It's annoying and uncomfortable and invasive.
Well, and I, I mean, we just wear things that have metal in them sometimes and so then it's going to pop and how do we determine?
If there is or isn't something there.
So I just, we just, I just want us to, that's why it's a discussion item, it's not, I'm here for uh, action. I, I think just maybe kind of pondering and looking through it.
Yeah, I think you do.
Big old metal plate.
That's what I would say, too.
Obviously, if we were doing ones, it would be in a very private place, so nobody's going to, to your point, nobody would know that there was a particular kid getting wanted. It's the, it's the, what happens if it buzzes, that concerns me, how we handle that? Protecting the students' rights to privacy and those kinds of things, but then also on the other side of that, protecting the rest of the students' rights to safety.
Right.
It's a really fine balancing act.
Safety first.
Yep.
Seems as though you have three creative issues to, to deal with. Seems as though you have three good issues to deal with, what, of course, under what circumstances would the need arise to do that?
Right, so for example, at both of our high schools this year, we have, we had kids, one student at each school who, um, presented enough of a threat that, that, our threat assessment showed them as a high level threat assessment, so this is the other part of the conversation that your decision tonight to, um, approve the student discipline policy takes care of, because prior to this, those high level threat assessment students were not coming in front of the board, so we were asking our administrators to make really hard decisions about whether or not a student is safe enough to be at school. The policy now reads that they don't make that decision, once that determination is made that they're a high level threat, they're coming before the board and the board will make the decision as to whether or not you feel comfortable having that student at school. In the event that you do and there's a behavior plan in place, part of it is our SRO and our district, our armed district safety specialist is, um, doing a visual and both in this case are boys, so they're kind of lifting up their shirts and showing their waistband just so that they can make sure there's nothing tucked into it, but it is just a visual. But they don't, neither of them feels a hundred percent confident that, that they are not missing something, so in, in those very specific.
That's kind of a second piece, what are, what are the protocols to actually carry out the wand in there third night? What do you do with what you want it to go by?
Exactly. Which is the question.
Yeah, once, I mean, if, if we're gonna go forward, once all those three elements are clearly identified, then I think we can address it, but I, I wouldn't be able to go forward at this moment.
So what, what would you like the next step to be, do, um, do you want us to do some research to see if there's policy out there that even deals with this? Would you, um?
Aside from just policy, we would need to know what the protocols are. And I, yeah. I like the thought that we're there.
I know, I know.
You know, that's really sad. But it's new society.
And it's a very, very tiny percentage of people that we're talking about, like.
I would be interested to see if and what other districts are doing.
Yeah, we'll do some research, see if we can, I don't know if we'll find anything that will, I mean, it's, it's out there because they heard about it through the other.
And I'd also like their opinions on what percentage of the population I think they would need to use it on.
Well, I think this is the first year since I've been in this office that we've had this level of concern.
Okay.
And it was.
What, you're at a one percent?
Oh, yeah.
I would hope so. I would hope so.
Two kids are almost, they're fifteen, sixteen hundred, how does it, a population of fifteen, sixteen hundred high school kids. So it's a very small percentage. We'll do some research and we'll come back.
Okay, do we have an update on the base program?
We do, um, we have, uh, we have two coordinators who have been here for years, who are completely committed to continuing the program. And then, um, Suzie Adams, um, would be the third, so we are comfortable, um, saying that we can open three base sites this year and man them for the year and not pull the rug out from under parents. When we looked at the sites, um, we felt like it was really important to have one in Apple, uh, because there are so few childcare options in Apple. Um, one at Garwood, because that's our highest.
Huge site.
And then one at, um, John Brown, um, and so Suzie would be the coordinator at John Brown and then also continue the director role. So that's, that would be our recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, next up is the social media component. Um, to potentially put out, because we have all these social media, um, groups, that if we, as a board, were to put out a social media page strictly informative, not allowing any comment whatsoever, but just to let people, the public know what we're doing, where we're at, why we're, you know, Bob went to Betty Kiefer or, you know, who welcomed the superintendent, you know, just things like that to keep the public informed. Um, if we have, uh, hot ticket items that are gonna be coming up on the agenda to let the public know, hey, this is coming up, please come have links to us so that they can just click it and be able to email us or do whatever you can do on there, I don't know, because it would not be me. I'm not texting, so, um, but just to make a more accessibility friendly platform. Um, if, if that is needed, I, I don't know, but it was something that I thought about. Trustee Quimby would be, would love to, to mend that for us.
Oh, love.
All over that feud.
Charlie built, just sitting there.
I'm, I'm good with having an avenue to get information out, and we, we already have the, the district one, but I think board specific, because, I mean, we want people to comment on the, the district one, we don't want.
Correct, that's why.
We want, I mean, people can message us through that, so we would still be able to get messages, just not.
Comments.
It's not, it's not a platform for discussion whatsoever, it's simply a.
Information board, yeah.
This is what the boards.
Mm-hmm.
Think it'll help with the.
And Dave's gonna do that, is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
I think it'll help with the long range planning and people to be informed, like.
Continue to update as numbers come in, as discussions happen, absolutely, yeah.
And we just.
Just start a little bit communicating back out.
If we wanna put something out there as a group, then we can do it.
Yep.
Yeah.
You could spell check it.
Thank you.
What's that?
Don't use too many zacks.
That's right.
That Nazi police will come after you. Okay, so then we can move forward with that, do you think that would be positive?
Mm-hmm.
Yay. Okay, we have to, the back to school welcome planning?
Yep, just, um, I will send out an invite, but just so you are aware, that our, uh, back to school event will be Tuesday morning, August thirtieth, starting at eight fifteen. Uh, there'll be breakfast prior to that in the vendor fair, so if you get there seven thirty, quarter to eight and have breakfast. Um, and we have some fun things planned.
At eight?
Yeah. And one of the fun things that are planned is, um, the, the theme this year is bringing the joy back, because there's just been a lot of angst over the last couple of years with COVID and everything that's going on politically and um, that we just want to get back to being joyful and really focusing on our kids, so that's the theme, is finding the joy. Um, and so the, it will be, there'll be some information that I'll provide in staff, but then we're gonna do a minute to minute competition where we're gonna ask each each building to have a team of five and, um, the district office will have a team of five and we would like the board to be a team of five, because one of the things that I really want for the board is for the staff to see the board as people who are participatory and, and want to be part of this bigger team, and so I just thought that might be a good way to start.
You're in it?
For a minute. For a minute, only a minute.
Only a minute.
Only a minute?
I'm sure there will be snacks.
What, what do we do for a minute? Dance?
No.
We don't know what we're gonna do yet, we'll see some charge putting that one together.
Is it joyful to dance?
It is joyful to dance, it is, yeah, so that's just.
Positive natures will, will be restrained.
Yeah, it's all about having fun.
Okay, so, uh, the last item, which we've gone over two minutes, are we okay on?
That's all right.
This will be, this will be a really quick.
Is the district newsletter.
Yes, so Rebecca and I have been working on, it's a front and back kind of, uh, page, the plan is to have it to the printer by July twentieth so that it goes into the mail um, to all addresses within Lakeland School District, so every patron will get a copy of it, there, um, will be information about the long range planning committee, we will have a link, uh, we decided not to do a link, we just said, if this is something you're interested in participating in, please call us at the district office, we get the phone number. Uh, our hope is that we can get a few more community members who are not tied to the school.
Cool.
Um, so that's in there, uh, there's some information letting our patrons know that our levy expires and that we will be rerunning it in some form and that the information will be forthcoming, the registration information, open house dates, um, it's just some other.
Updates on base?
Thank you, we will put the three locations that base will be, and we were waiting for this.
Ongoing.
And then, yeah, and then we had a little bit of space left on the school specific side, so we put the two, the dates of the two upcoming football games.
Oh, cool, fun, okay.
So those will be going out, uh, we are gonna print about thirty copies and Dr. Pasley and I have, um, July twenty eighth, I think, uh, scheduled out on our calendars where we will go out to churches, senior centers, and start to, um, introduce ourselves, build the bridge to provide some communication to different groups.
So, awesome where we are. All right, well, folks, that concludes the, uh, the open portion of our meeting, so, um, oh, I lie, I lie. Do we have any input for future agenda items?
Not today.
Okay, then I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session, uh, pursuant to Idaho Code seventy four two oh six one A and B.
I move to move into executive session per Idaho Code seventy four two oh six one A and B.
Second.
Having a motion and a second, we need to roll call vote.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes.
Aye.
Trustee Jones. Trustee Quimby.
Yes.
Trustee Maine.
Yes. In executive session and we will take a ten minute break, some of us have to have a rest room. Okay, so we've come out of executive session and I will take any motions at this time.
I move, considering the circumstances, the, the employee, uh, oh. Seven dash one three dash two two B was faced with, I move to let her out of her contract. And, um, advise administration to send a letter to the State Board of Education.
I apologize, Trustee Maine, the only way we're able to send a letter to the Professional Standards Commission is if you do not let them.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
I moved a letter out of her contract based on the circumstances that were out of our hands.
A second.
Having a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Any other motions?
I move to accept administration's recommendation for the interim principal for Lakeland High School for the twenty two, twenty three school year.
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. And that concludes our meeting, it's nine oh four.
Oh, good job.
Good job.
It's not ten, it's.